Welcome to our August Board of Education meeting. Please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Paulette O'Fryett?
Here.
John Cream?
Here.
Brian Tobin?
Here.
Tom Grattan?
Here.
Scott Latham? In the event of an emergency, visitors are advised that they may exit this room from the one side which leads directly into the parking lot. In the event of an emergency, everyone is asked to move away from the building and do not attempt to leave in your automobiles because this may cause traffic problems and block incoming emergency vehicles. Thank you. That brings us to our first hearing of visitors. At this time, we will entertain comments and questions about agenda items only. Would anyone care to address the board at this time? Okay. Pardon me? This is for agenda items only, then there's one at the end? Okay, of course. That brings us to our consent agenda, which is the approval of the minutes from our regular meeting of July 26th, our financial matters, which are our bills, treasures report, monthly budget status report, transfers. There's no extra classroom activity fund, obviously, because the kids are out of school. We have two contracted services, Audi Therapy of New York and Scope UPK program, and we are surplusing a TV, a travel cart, and an air conditioner. It also includes our CSEs, which are the recommendations from the CSE committee. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Second.
All in favor? That brings us to old business. Dr. Moore, you have some old business, too?
So I was just going to join old business and the superintendent's report together. We had talked about some of the work around the district, our new line TVs. We had a three-year project for our new line 72-inch TVs that you see in many of our classrooms. We were able to finish that a couple week ago, actually, last week, the last 24 went in. We upgraded all of the district's approximately 75 smartboards to new line touchscreen TVs through grant funding that we were given, you know, as part of the, which grant was it? The Carissa and the Rescue Plan. You know, technology was one of the allowable expenses in there. As you can feel, the air conditioning in here was also allowed, and we upgraded and revamped the air conditioning in this room because it was 20-some-odd years old and it needed to be done. And we were able to put in MIR-13 filters, which filter out much of the COVID issues that we had. You know, so we were able to do a lot of those things. We've had a tremendous amount of that work being done. Our parking lots at the high school were painted. The roof on this building is being worked on daily. You've probably seen the crane out there. Should be done in about four days. The elementary playground was re-blacktopped. The Gaga pit is going to be resurfaced. They're putting in the padded cushioning so that our kids are no longer diving in the sawdust that we had over there and the wood chips and coming up with them, you know, so they'll have the padded surfaces there. We also replaced all of the flooring in the elementary school first floor. We had a lot of tiles coming up, and it was getting to the point that they were difficult to keep down, so we ended up going with the eight-inch by like 18-inch tiles, the flexible vinyl tile that they use, the 25-year tile that we have in some of the places in this building. So we're having teachers in next week for Superintendent's Conference Day. We're having a new teacher orientation with about half a dozen teachers, and our guys have really worked very hard over the summer and the contractors they've worked with to get things moving in the great direction so that our kids can come back to a really student-friendly, happy building. And we're looking forward to getting them back in. Schools are quite boring over the summer because it's mostly adults. It's much nicer when we get the kids back in, and we've been working hard to get there, not just planning-wise and instructional-wise, but also, you know, our plant and property-wise. And I'm looking forward to everybody coming back when we're done everything in a couple of weeks to get to see how it all looks.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any old business?
Yeah, I do. At the last board meeting, I got very upset by what was being said and the way it was being said, and I overreacted. I behaved very inappropriately, and I said some things I wish I had never said. I apologize to everybody in this room. I apologize to the students and staff for setting a poor example. I really feel badly about the way I behaved, and that's what I have to say for old business.
Thank you. Anyone else? That brings us to superintendent's report. Back to you, Dr. Moore.
I did both at once, so we're ahead of schedule. Superintendent's report is done.
Okay, that brings us to personnel. We've got several here that I'll try not to mess up the names too bad. Employees leaving the district, Kimberly Jobs resignation effective August 1, 2023. Employees entering the district full-time permanent positions, Brittany Sanders, a music teacher, effective August 30th through, 2023 through August 30th, 2027. Nicole Thompson, E&amp;L teacher, a four-year probationary appointment effective August 30th, 2023 through August 30th, 2027. The reason I do the beginning and the end dates is that's when their probationary appointment is over. Kathryn Panetta, formerly a teacher aide, will be a three-year probationary appointment as a teacher assistant to replace Abrams effective August 30th, 2023. Michelle Walensky, formerly a part-time lunch aide, will become a teacher aide to replace Mrs. Jobs effective August 30th, 2023. Ashley Loretto, teacher aide, we're hiring a teacher aide to replace Katie Panetta effective August 30th, 2023. And Lisa Molnar would be a one-on-one aide effective August 30th, 2023. Employees entering the district full-time temporary, Richard Belvus, a special aide leave replacement for Kristen Deriggin effective August 30th, 2023 through December 22nd, 2023. Employees entering the district part-time permanent, Nora Help, the part-time three-hour lunch aide to replace Mrs. Walensky effective August 30th, 2023. And we've got some part-time temporary, junior high girls tennis coach Courtney Kane, arts and education coordinator Daniel Donahue, and some substitute teachers, Victoria Abrams and Kimberly Jobs. We have a status change. Karen Avret has rescinded her intent to retire effective June 30th, 2024. Are there any questions or comments on the superintendent's recommendations? Can I please have a motion to accept? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
So can I just point out that the music teacher that we'll be utilizing will be shared between us and Greenport? You know, we had an opportunity when they came up with some funding to add a part-time person rather than hiring two part-time people in two neighboring districts. We're working with them and our collective bargaining units to work out a deal where we're going to share the person. So, you know, they're a full-time employee for us, and then we will IMA them with the Greenport School District, which we've done with many employees in Southhold, both in our teaching staff like Rotzi and our administrative staff like Mr. Scheid was or Mr. Gamber was. And, you know, so I just want to, I want that to be very clear because it appears as a full-time person, and it is a full-time person for us, but one that will be here part-time. So what we had originally planned as hiring a part-time Point Four, we had the opportunity to get a different candidate that we think, you know, sharing between the districts will create a more stable environment to keep a teacher. So they'll be tenure and probationary track with us and working in both places. I just want to make sure that's clear so that it's not confusing to anybody.
It may be clarified in this next item on our agenda, which is the intermunicipal cooperative agreement. I need a motion to approve the following resolution. Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby authorizes the superintendent of schools to execute an intermunicipal agreement with the Greenport School District for a shared music teacher with each school district assuming 50% of all costs associated with such position. Are there any questions about it? A motion to accept?
So, second.
All in favor? I need a motion to award the transportation bid to Sunrise Bus Company.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? I need a motion to please, please to approve the transportation contract with Sunrise Buses for the 2023-2024 school year at the rate per the transportation bid. Once the bid and once the contract, is that what the difference is? Okay. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? We need a motion to award the food service bid to Whitson's, which I believe were the only people that bid on it, if I'm not mistaken, right, Mr. Scheid? No, Whitson's are the only people that bid on the food service contract, I believe, right?
That makes it... Sunrise was the only bid on transportation, too, right?
Is there a motion to accept?
So, second.
All in favor? We need a motion to approve the 2023-2024 district-wide safety plan. We have to do this every year. There's a copy of it on our website. I actually have a copy if anybody cares to see it. It's something that, we have a committee that gets together every year that reviews it, and it's part of, what is that called?
State... Save legislation.
The Save Legislation. So every year, we review it, we make changes, and we have to approve it before August 31st, I believe, if I got my date right, or before school year begins or something like that. So are there any questions on it? Scott Latham does sit on that committee, so I always feel good that he's part of that. No questions or anything? A motion to accept?
So moved. Second.
All in favor? We've been meeting over the last several months, as have the administrators, and we met collectively back in July, and we came up with our district goals, and I'll read them quickly. Goal number one is academic goal is 75% to 80% of classrooms and teachers will utilize high-quality learning targets, increasing student engagement and ownership of learning as measured by classroom visits and walkthroughs. Goal two, social-emotional learning. The Southhold Union Free School District will integrate character education into classrooms and school-wide activities utilizing Rethink Ed focused on supporting student and adult social-emotional health as evidenced by an increase in student-staff reported feelings of wellness and a decrease in behavioral health referrals. Goal number three, the financial. The Southhold Union Free School District Business Office will produce a tax-sensitive budget that is fully supportive of all initiatives and opportunities for students as evidenced by a positive budget vote of 75% or greater vote while maintaining a healthy bond rating. Goal four, the facilities. The Southhold Union Free School District Facilities Department will complete a five-year plan utilizing local knowledge and the architect's report to maintain and proactively ensure a safe, comfortable learning environment for students and staff. Dr. Moore, do you want to speak to this briefly before we vote on it?
So last year, we spent time with both the administrators in the district gathering information from our community through our data triangle survey and also working with our Board of Ed to come up with commitments, which you'll still see on our board website. And commitments are wonderful to have, and these are beliefs that we all hold to be true when it comes to educating students. We then spent a good part of last year, again, putting out to our community and our students and our faculty and staff to develop the attributes of a graduate of Southhold School District. And then the next logical step is to develop a set of goals that can be measured multiple times throughout the year, and ideally, we'll achieve each goal. And if not, we'll adjust and we'll look to tweak our goals, and we may add as we go. The difference between the goals and the commitments, commitments are wonderful and visions are wonderful and mission statements are wonderful. Goals are measurable. So at the end of the school year, we will look at these and say, you know, we had this many, after walking through classrooms 300 times, we saw this this many times, this percentage. It wasn't as high as we wanted, so these are things we're going to do different to try to achieve that goal next year. Or we had 90%, which is higher than we were hoping for, so maybe we're going to look for a different goal next year because we've achieved that one. You know, so the natural progression from vision and mission to commitments and then now to goals is what we've been working on over the last, really since the pandemic ended. It's been probably two and a half years. And when I say the pandemic ended, I mean when our focus wasn't really just on keeping the doors open. You know, so that's where we're at with them. We will have a couple of meetings during the year where the superintendent's report will be, you know, what progress we've made towards these goals and where we expect to be at the end of the year.
So you'll share the progress at our regular board meetings?
Yes. I'll share it a couple of times during the year. It's not something that, you know, some of it can't be measured monthly.
Well, that's the financial. Okay. Is there a motion to adopt the following or the receding district goals? Second?
Second.
All in favor? Finance Committee report. What's you? Finance Committee?
Yeah, a couple of months, right?
October 15th is usually when the reports do the, right? Back to school starts. Building Committee report?
Nothing to report.
Policy Committee, Scott's not here, so I'll restart the committee with, and we met on August 10th to review some policies that we already have in effect. There's just changes to them. So this is the first reading, how policy changes and policy enactment work is we have two readings and then they're adopted by the board. There are copies up here for anybody that cares to look at them. I'll just read the numbers and the name. Most of these changes, I would say 98% of the changes are changing the word from shall to will and changing the pronouns. I would say that's basically what most of the changes were.
And any state regs.
Right, state regulations. And, you know, these were all vetted by NISBA and our attorneys as well. So number 40, I'm asking for a motion or I'm making a motion for the first read on number 4321, which is the programs for students with disabilities. Number 4321.5, the confidentiality and access to IEPs, IESPs, and SPs. Number 4327, which is homebound instruction. 4772, which is graduation ceremonies. Number 5151, which is homeless children. Number 5151R, which is the homeless children regulation. And 84155, which is alcohol and drug testing for drivers. I think that's all of them. Like I said, we have copies up here if you'd want to take a look at them, and we will adopt them at our meeting next month. And again, they're just revisions of policies that we already have in effect. Any board members have any questions? I'm sure you guys read them already. Okay, I made the motion. Is there a second? All in favor? Anybody have any new business? Oh, okay. That brings us to our second hearing of visitors. At this time, we will entertain comments and questions about agenda items or any school matters in general. We ask that you come up to the microphone and state your name, and please be respectful. Who would like to start?
Good evening. My name's Dr. Mindy Homer. I have a daughter entering sixth grade, and she has continued her entire elementary education here from kindergarten. We love it here, and I do have some questions about what you just addressed, hiring the full-time music teacher. So I understand that that music teacher is now going to be shared with Greenport, and I think originally, we were talking about hiring a Point Four. Is that the same that we're getting? Yes. And then we were going to get Point Two from the high school and then Point Two from a chorus teacher to teach band. So it's a little disheartening standing here because what I'm hearing is now you've hired someone full-time that doesn't have the ability to become full-time here because now we're sharing them with Greenport. So at the last meeting, you said, "We will evaluate. We will constantly be checking." Number one, if you do that and you realize you do need someone full-time, now you don't have the ability to do so. So we've now been backed into a corner. And my question for the board, which nobody has answered or asked you, is when you're teaching somebody in elementary school, and I want to know from each of you if you really think the best way to teach someone is to have three different teachers trying to teach the same subject. For example, math. I don't know any program in college, high school, where you go and you have one math teacher on Monday, one math teacher on a Wednesday, one on a Friday trying to teach you the same subject because that lacks consistency. And that is what I'm hearing from you all, is that we believe that a lack of consistency is far better than a full-time, one-person teacher. And given the choice, when the band teacher retired, you had to make a decision of what you were just talking about, your mission statement, your goal, and what you want for our children and how you want them to learn. And what I'm hearing is you think, or do you, I don't know if you believe, I want to know that, you truly believe, given the choice, that having three people trying to teach something is better than one consistent teacher. Is that truly what you believe? That is the best. That is the best way we should do it, and that's what we're going to do. Is that what you believe?
So I'm going to answer both of the, both of the comments that you made. First...
No, I just, I just really want my question answered. Like you believe that is the best way.
The statement that you made at the beginning about us not being able to change is not accurate. Our contract with Greenport is an annual one that either of us can get out of either year. So if we were to evaluate, as we said we would, we would have the ability to return that person in either a higher level to Southhold, a lower level to Southhold, or fully to Southhold. So we're not locked in anytime beyond this year when it comes to how much of a teacher we can hire. So, you know, that part. The second part is having more than one person teach a subject is a typical elementary. I can only speak for the 13 years that I taught elementary school. I can't speak for any other professional knowledge than that. I taught in a building that had 17 grade-level teachers, all different, teaching the same thing. Kids got different instruction from different people. I was the perfect teacher for some of them, and I wasn't the perfect teacher for others. So the teacher in the room next door to me may have been better for certain kids than I was, whether they were in my class or not. You know, having varied teachers, you know, gives kids different opportunities to be successful. So I believe that we have some kids that will enjoy their new teacher more than they did any of their other teachers, and there will probably be some kids that would prefer to have their past teacher back. I don't think there'll be a tremendous level of inconsistency. We're going to have one band director K to 12, which I believe provides us more consistency than we have had in the past with two band directors K to 12, one in the elementary, one in the secondary. You know, so yes, I do think this will be a successful model, and I think it's a model that will serve our kids well.
But that's not what I asked you. I asked you, given the choice, having one consistent, full-time music teacher in the elementary versus three, if you had the choice for your child, would you pick having that versus the one full-time? I understand that you're citing things that you've seen, but is that truly what you would pick for your child? And I think that's a fair question.
Yeah.
Sounds like the answer might be no.
No, no. It sounds like I'd like you to rephrase the question because I don't understand it.
It's clear. Right now, we are taking three teachers, a chorus teacher to teach band, a Point Four that you've just hired, and the high school band teacher. And the kids are going to be split between those three to learn. And what I'm asking you is, when the band teacher retired, we had a choice. You had a choice. You had a choice to propose something to the board, and the board could vote on it. And your choice was, do we replace one person full-time or do we try to piecemeal it together with three and do it that way? Is that what's best for our kids? That's what I'm asking you. You think having three teachers is better than hiring one full-time?
Yes.
Okay. And we all think that that's what's best for our kids.
I can't speak for anybody but myself, but yes.
Yeah, and so I think that's what's upsetting is because my child is in the school. I know, Dr. Cream, you don't have, you don't have children in the school. So Paulette, you don't have children in the school now. And I just feel as though, you know, I'm here and the parents stood here and they're telling you what we want. This is what we want. Our kids love it. We think it's what's in the best interest, and I just feel like it fell on deaf ears the last time. Because when we got through everything and talking about what was best for the community and what we wanted and the reasons and giving you numbers and data and the budget was voted on, the responses from the board, one was, "Don't worry about it. My son's in chorus." Okay. There was another response that says, "You know, we don't think this is about a band teacher. It's about a personality that's larger than life, and we're losing this great person, and that's what we're upset about." And we're not upset about that. We're upset because we're not getting one consistent teacher that we feel is best for our kids. And then lastly, I'm sorry, Dr. Cream, but you told someone, "If you don't like it, then leave. Leave a place that we love and adore and respect and serve." And then, of course, there was profanity after that. So to have board members say that to parents who care about their kids and then go ahead and make the part-time hire, it just feels disheartening. And I, I don't know what else to say because the decision has been made, but I'm just so disappointed. And I'm concerned for the evaluation as well because I'm curious what metrics you're going to use to do that, to measure how successful this is. Can you elucidate that for me?
So we're going to look at our enrollment numbers with our students as we do annually. So, you know, we have numbers going back a number of years for how many kids are involved in the different music programs. We will also look at their performances and how they, you know, how they perform. You know, we'll evaluate them when they come to the upper levels and see what their skillset is, you know? So we'll look at it from a bunch of different areas to see how they're doing. We'll probably, you know, utilize surveys as we do fairly regularly. We've been sending them out every year. We probably, we didn't get a great return this year, quite honestly, from our community, so we're probably going to start sending them out every other year. I think we oversurveyed maybe a little bit with the pandemic and everything. But we'll utilize a lot of those to look at, you know, whether we're having success with the model that we have, as we do with many things, you know, throughout the year.
Right now, it's very easy to measure math, right? You can have the kids take a test. You can see how they perform. You can see where they stand up. Music is a little bit harder. I'm just curious, like, is there some sort of metric that you're going to use? Are you going to have everyone come in and perform for you and see if they can do a scale? I don't know. You know, and by the time you wait every other year for a survey or you wait till you get to the higher level, the issue you have now is that you have someone fourth grade, and now they've progressed into high school, and you realize they're not that great. But now how many years have gone by, and then how do you rebuild that?
See, I actually think that we'll have the luxury of having our high school band teacher working with our fourth graders. So I believe that we will probably have a better understanding of where our kids are three years earlier than we would have in the past. So not only do we have that level of consistency, because it's going to be the same band teacher who happens to be an absolutely fantastic band teacher, working with our kids from third grade now, straight through, fourth grade, I think is when they'd start with them, straight through 12th grade. Any areas of weakness that we may have with our younger kids, I think, will be identified significantly earlier than they may have in the past.
Because you feel that a person who comes in Point Two will have more pulse on the situation than someone who's there full-time?
I don't understand someone we don't have.
You said you think you're going to have more consistency because the high school band teacher will be there.
Yeah, the person that's teaching every band ensemble throughout the year, I believe, will have a greater gauge of where our kids are band-wise than having two different people do it, yes. Just because it's one person, not because of the skillset, not because anybody's better or worse. If we had an elementary person that was teaching straight through all the high, you know, our band, straight through three through 12, I think they'd have a better understanding of where our kids are at than if they, you know, no different than if it's the high school person doing it. So yes, I do.
Okay, I kind of disagree because if you have an elementary band teacher with them for fourth and fifth grade, they know where they stand, especially in terms of NISBA. But I just, I just am so, so, so disappointed, and I'm really disappointed in, in Dr. Cream's behavior and the reaction from, from the board. And I know you apologized, and I know that you feel terrible, and I'm glad that you do. But it wasn't the profanity that was the most upsetting. But it wasn't the profanity that was the most upsetting. It was the fact that you told somebody, "If you don't like it, leave Southold." And that's something you can't take back. So, I appreciate your apology, but knowing how you feel really about someone who doesn't maybe agree with you just doesn't sit well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Does anybody else care to address the board at this time? Just come up and state your name at the microphone, please.
Good evening.
Hi.
Dr. Morrow, members of the board. My name is Richard Mullen. I am born and raised in Southold. Some of you might know me as a leftover. I am here tonight to support my friend, John Kreen. I know that he made a mistake in how he spoke to a parent, but he's apologized for that. Dr. Kreen has been on this board for 15 years. He has given so much of his time for the betterment of this school. I have had four children go through this school from kindergarten to 12th grade, and they were all involved in the music program. And the education they received and the reputation that this school has is because of Dr. Kreen and other board members, past and present. And I call him Dr. Kreen because those of you who don't know him, he's a heart doctor. So, looking out for people's best interest is in his nature. He's always taken the time to do what's right for the students. This is a thankless job that you guys have, but he keeps coming back because he cares about these kids, as do you all. I do not understand this cancel culture. If people have a problem, they just want to get rid of it. They don't want to solve anything. If I had, if I had to quiet, if I had to quit my job and sell my business every time I made a mistake, Mullen Motors would have been gone a long time ago. Maybe I'm getting old, but I don't see a problem here. A mistake was made, an apology was made, let's move on. And if any parent feels unfortunate, uncomfortable stating an objection or an idea to one of these board members, then you do not know these people. They are all upstanding individuals in our community, and they are here because they care about your children. I support this board, and I support you, John. Do not step down. I am just one of many who think that you mean too much to this district to leave. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Does anybody else care to?
Yes, I absolutely do care. I've been a member of this community for 12 years. My name is Michelle Roser. I know you, Dr. Morrow, I've met you several times. I am not okay with the fact that if someone doesn't like what someone says, you tell them to leave. I am a member of this community. There are a lot of wonderful people that have brought a lot of good to this community. We bring more than we take, and for someone to say, "Just because you don't like what we're saying, to leave," that is not okay. That is not cancel culture. That is just, just disrespect. Just because we weren't born here doesn't mean we do not belong here. I have a child in third grade, he's been here since kindergarten. I have an invested interest in this community, in this school. And I'd like to ask, how many people on this board right now actually have children in this school? What is your invested interest besides taxes? Seriously, like, if you don't have a child in the school, what is the skin in your game? We actually care about this school. We care about the teachers. I'm involved in PTA, I'm involved in CAST, I'm a board member of the CAST, um, the Southold Mothers Club. And for us to be just dismissed because you didn't like what we said, that is not okay. You can't tell somebody to move or to leave. We pay taxes. We feed into this community. We go to restaurants. We localize everything. So, I just think that it's just very disrespectful and very dismissive to just disregard what we're feeling and what we're thinking, especially if you don't have children in the school and especially if you've never had children in the school. I respect the fact that you're a doctor. I respect the fact that everyone comes here and shows up every month because I have to do that for my job as well. You're elected officials, you should be more open-minded to what we have to say. And that's what I'd like to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else care to address the board at this time?
Yes. Hi, I'm Darcy Cochran, daughter of late Jean Cochran, supervisor of Southold Town and police officer Sergeant Pep Cochran of Southold Town. I just want to say that over the past 10 to 15 years, this board has done an incredible job adding and improving to all the programs and has always had the best interest for the students while keeping the budget in mind for the community. I know that everybody wants the best opportunities and education for their children. Everyone also needs to understand and realize that at this juncture, the board did their homework and had the opportunity to revisit the need and budget for the music program. Might I also add that the board always puts the students' needs first. I support this board, Dr. Kreen, and Southold High School forever. I went to school here, and I love Southold Town as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Howard Dickerson, and I also went to school here. And I started in the music program in third grade when Ken Hollowell started, and he was my music teacher right through the time I graduated from high school. And in the middle of that time, we, uh, at Southold put on for the very first time in the United States, Jesus Christ Superstar. And so, there was, anyway, there's, my point here is not to just go through a list of, uh, of our accomplishments, but to say that there's a long, proud tradition of music in Southold School District. And I was lucky enough to have the same music teacher from third grade all the way through 12th grade, which is not going to happen to everybody. But it's led me to have an interesting perspective on this current issue. You know, when we do evaluations of school outcomes and metrics and things like that, almost all of the teachers that we see in our school time, I'll have a first-grade teacher, then a second-grade teacher, I'll have a math teacher for a couple of years in high school. But the one person, even if it's not for 10 years straight like it was with, with Mr. Hollowell, that we see for years and years and years is a math teacher, I mean, excuse you, a music teacher. Now, there are alternative educational methods where people believe that that's the most effective way of getting to children throughout their entire, you know, Waldorf schools and things like that. We don't have the luxury as a public school district to teach our students the way some of those specialized things do. But we do have one area of the school which acts that way, and it's the music program. Now, there's another side issue that is similar to that, that's the school nurse. It's somebody, my mother was a school nurse, she's here today, and she's another, this nurse is another person whose students see year after year after year, and in particular, students who are perhaps troubled or may have issues that are not showing up just by sitting in a classroom. People who they see and develop a relationship with for many years are the people who can get through to children who don't show up on the positive side of our metrics. School nurse is one of those people. Believe it or not, the, the music teacher is another one because of this multi-year connection that they have with children. Now, there's another issue about music that was not as important 30, 40 years ago as it is today. Our kids are bombarded by social media and things like that. And what those things do is they activate the endorphins centers of their brains, and they do it with the children being passive. And it's one of the biggest things that we have to combat as parents, is how to get children to actively want to do the things that we want them to do in school. Now, every once in a while, you get a kid who's great in math and they're nothing, like nothing but math, and that will motivate them through their whole career. Music is one of those very few things, and it's constant in schools from elementary school right through high school, where the act of producing music is an endorphinating process of our brain, which is generated by the student themselves. This means that music is just about the most powerful tool we have in our schools to combat some of the social things that are, that are actually tearing our kids and our families and our society apart in many ways. Because our kids have very few things where they can learn over years and years and years to self-medicate, or self-medicate is the wrong word, to self-pleasure, to self-develop their ability to take care of themselves without outside, um, social media interest. Now, I'm a big reader. I can get this through reading, but in, in reading, it takes 15, 20, 25 minutes for the process of reading a book you like to actually have the brain activity effect as playing a musical instrument, which almost immediately impacts the pleasure centers of children's brains. And when children can start early on that and have support for years and years and years in an environment that they feel comfortable and trusted, they have a protection against some of the worst things that are happening to our children in society today. So, I'm not here to actually speak pro or con on a particular issue of what teachers getting, um, hired and when. What I want to say, though, is that the kind of metrics that we use to evaluate school success, which works, as the previous person was talking about, works very well for math and science and things like that because they can be measured by tests. We can't measure very well just how well something like music changes the life of a student. So, when we evaluate the needs of a music program based on how many clients we're trying to serve, how many kids want to belong to it, you're missing the point. The point is that there's a lot of kids in school who may never get to be good in music or activated by music or passionate about music if they're not given years of one-on-one, um, connection to a trusted music teacher. That way of looking at the music program is not showing up in the kind of decision you're making right now. Music has, has a, has a power in the community that cannot be measured in the same way that other success parameters, like college, you know, entrance and graduation rates and things like that. And there's a large percentage of kids who go through school who may not be academically inclined but may be able to be reached and have their lives changed by something like music, which will not show up in your metrics. Frankly, in a school district like Southold, which has had good metrics on this stuff for decades and decades and decades, we should be throwing out the modern metric measurement of our success. Our success is how good this school is for our community over the decades, what we're doing for the community, community involvement, community participation, back and forth. How, and also, when I was going through school, there were very few foreign language speakers that needed ESL training. That's probably the biggest growing fact, percentage of students over the last decade or so. How many of them might be helped and saved and be made academic if, instead of the only way they were looked at as need, as people needing ESL services, but were able to be brought into a music program, but there's a language barrier and they're just not even considered as the clients of the music program? I'm not saying that's really the case here, but is there, say, for instance, a Spanish-speaking music teacher that is particularly dedicated all year, every year, to dealing with this now maybe 20% or so of our school population or higher? I haven't looked at this lately. My wife and I adopted a couple of kids from Ethiopia 10 years ago, and they were in a big school in Nassau County and were not getting what they needed, even though they got great quality ESL stuff. And my mom-daughter said, "I don't want to be considered an ESL student." And I brought her to Southold, and she graduated here with, less than 10 years ago, and she was part of Grease that was put up on this stage. This is the kind of thing that she could not get in a big, metrics-dominated school in Nassau County. But she got it here, and by the time she graduated from high school, her life path was in a different direction, and it stayed in that different direction the, so the rest of her life, which she would not have gotten if it were not for the music and theater programs here that we have here in this little school here that we have at an order of magnitude more powerful for our students than many other places that may beat us in metrics year after year because they got really good stats takers. But that's not what Southold High School is about. Southold, Southold School District has been about empowering our entire community to get everything they can out of it, even if it doesn't show up in their metrics and stats.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else care to address the board at this time?
Hi, good evening, Tom Kennedy. Uh, Dr. Morrow, I'm glad you mentioned, um, commitments because I, um, was looking at the website, and the commitment number one, "The Board of Education is dedicated to maintaining fiscally healthy and responsible systems, which are educationally sound, providing students a safe, healthy environment in which to learn and thrive." Can you tell me, what is the, the cost per student to educate Southold this year?
I don't know the cost off the top of my head.
We had it at the budget, and I, I did ask.
I did that book.
Yeah, I, I had the book, and, um, but then you referred me to the website. So, the website was not updated. So, I had to let, I mean, the last one you had on the transparency report, it says for the statewide average, it's $23,468. The county average is $25,637. Southold is $38,308. I mean, can you tell me why we have such a large gap between both the county and the state?
I'm sorry, Tom, why did you say the county? I just wanted to write this down so I had it.
No, I got it from your transparency report, so it is 20, yeah. Because you sent me the website, and the website data was like old.
I had that.
Okay.
I'll look for it, thank you.
All right, so the, uh, the county average is $25,637. So, I mean, it's a big disparity. It's big numbers.
Yeah. I would have to sit down and look at the numbers. I can't, I don't know the, uh, much about the county average and what's included in that.
Okay, but I mean, why are we spending like $10,000 more, $10,000 more to educate our children?
Some of it is, um, you know, some of it's geography. We offer, uh, programs in Southold, um, that our kids would have to travel great distances to if they wanted to go to other places and do, um...
So, programs, transportation is costing how much to get kids educated?
You know, so, some of it has to do with that. Transportation does cost us a good deal when we have to send kids, uh, you know, the nearest BOSI's is 45 minutes away on a bus, so it's not, uh, an inexpensive venture. But that's not a huge, I don't believe, uh, number in our budget. I would have to sit down, I'll be happy to sit down and look at the budget with you to try to figure out, um, you know, why our number is what it is, but I don't know that off the top of my head. You know, I mean, my guesses would be the fact that we are, uh, in a little bit of a different geographical area than some places. You know, like when I worked in prior districts, I had multiple BOSI's in my school district. You know, I actually had them in my building, so my kids walked from one side of the building to the other. Transportation costs were quite light when it came to that particular program. But I would have to really sit down to give you, um, you know, an intelligent answer about it. I would have to sit down and look at it with you. I don't have any of that in front of me, so I couldn't, you know, I couldn't give you anything to, to answer that now.
I mean, we have decreased enrollment. I think we're under 700 now for the district? Or we're just hovering at 700?
Around 700, yeah.
So, that's, I mean, it's down substantially o- over the years. I mean, this isn't sustainable. I mean, uh, how is the board, um, I mean, you know, look to future years, you know, to contain costs, but, you know, to continue all, you know, the programs that you, you're talking about? It's a lot of money. I mean, I work, I work three jobs, you know, to, to maintain a household. Um, it's tough. I mean, it's not easy for a lot of people, but I, I, I mean, need a better explanation than, you know, we can look at the numbers. I mean, this is what, you know, we, we, uh, trust you with all year. But you, nobody can, anyone offer an explanation why there's such a big difference. There are big districts, you know, big districts in, in, um, both Suffolk and Nassau, you know, and, and maybe they have a bigger tax base, but I, I, I just don't understand why it, it's this big. And it's not just geography.
Yeah, again, I don't know the answer. I'm not saying it's just geography. I'm saying that I would guess that has something to do with it. But like I said, I'd be happy to, I, I don't have statistics like that memorized, but I would be happy to look at it, if you would like to look at it. We can certainly look at surrounding districts, like there's about five local districts that are very similar to ours. I don't know what their per pupil spendings are, but I would expect that they're probably similar to ours. And I'd be happy to look at it. You know, we do, you know, we offer in Southold, um, we offer a tremendous amount of opportunities for a small place. We want to continue offering a tremendous amount of opportunities for a small place. Uh, it's what makes Southold what it is. You know, like I said, I'd be happy to sit down, you know, to have, um, an answer to a statistical question like that without knowing any of those other numbers off the top of my head is impossible, so I couldn't really give you one. But if you'd like to look at it, I'd be happy to look at it with you.
I, I mean, yeah, it's the second time, you know, I've kind of brought this, and I've been referred to the website, so some, you know, I don't know who the, the web, who's keeping this.
If you want to call my office... If you want to call my office, I'm happy for you to come in and sit down. We can look at numbers. We can pull up from any district. They're all available right on the state website, so I'll be happy to do that with you.
It might be interesting to do comparable districts.
I mean, is it possible to do it, like, in a more open forum? I mean, it just, you know, you and I having a meeting doesn't really get the, you know, shared amongst a larger population.
Maybe you could meet with Dr. Moore before next month's meeting, and you can make it part of your superintendent's report next month.
Sure.
Is that reasonable, Tom, you think?
No, that's definitely reasonable, but I mean, you know, I don't know if, I don't want to catch anybody off guard. This isn't like, you know, I'm not trying to, you know, play gotcha, but it's just...
I just don't have, I don't have answers, and I'm not a fan of guessing, you know? I find when I guess, you know, I end up having to circle back and say, "Oh, that wasn't right", you know?
I think we all get the answer.
I don't know the answer to it. I would tell you if I knew, but I don't know the answer. It's not, I'm keeping it secret. I just don't know, I don't know the answer. It's a good question and certainly one I would be happy to look at with you. You know, I don't know what's Greenport's per pupil spending, what's Matituck's, what's Shelter Islands, what's, you know, what's the number of the districts that are similar to us in, you know, and we all offer different things, but we offer similar things. I don't know the answer to those things, but I'd be happy to look at it. You know, I'll look at it myself now, just at...
Yeah, no, definitely. I appreciate it, and you have to make it part of the report. I appreciate it.
I'd be happy to look at it with you.
All right, just one other thing from the website that came up is, what you value as a district? It's communication effective, positive in two ways. You know, I watched the video multiple times, and just, you know, to Mr. Homer, I didn't find that you were snarky or disrespectful. I think as a parent, you came to address your concerns, and, you know, my advice to the board is you need to listen to these people. You know, show them they do courtesy, they are taking their time, just as well as you. Sorry, admirable that you're all here, but it's just as admirable that everybody came out tonight to voice their opinions. It's nice to do with some decorum, but, you know, it's important, and I think, you know, should acknowledge, you know, the fact that you're here with your family and that you took the time, and, you know, people are really passionate about it, and it's good to see in the community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else care to address the board? Wait one sec. No, no, I'm sorry. Come on up.
You get to come first, Tom.
You're just gonna have to put the microphone down.
Chuck.
Chuck, can you help?
Chuck. Can you help with the microphone?
You lower that for her, please.
I'm over the table, but I'd probably fall.
Middle, middle. Down low.
There you go. You can hold the microphone if you like. Is that okay with you? Okay.
Hello, Dr. Moore, members of the board. I am Scarlett Homer, and I am here to express how important the quality of instruction is to mine and everyone else's musical education, specifically band. I'm now going into sixth grade, and two years ago, I started my chapter in playing the clarinet with consistent quality once a week. I feel as though that quality is going to decline instantly with having multiple teachers. I myself am an equestrian, and I ride competitively. Having more than one instructor is quite challenging to learn. Here's why. There are two trainers at my riding facility, and they both have different opinions on things, and you start to struggle to learn because you can't master a skill completely because you're getting different opinions on how to learn the skill. They all teach differently. It's the same thing in our case. The part-time teacher is going to teach differently than the high school band instructor will, and the high school band instructor is going to instruct differently than the elementary music teacher that has never taught a band will teach, so on and so forth. I would like to ask you, Dr. Moore, and members of the board, how do you expect the group of students to learn with three different teachers?
So, I think what we expect is, we expect our teachers to work together to try to provide as much consistency and as positive a teaching environment as they can for you guys. You know, I could tell you that, I can tell you that I don't know what I don't know, so in, you know, in a period of time, we're going to get to see how it works. I don't know how you'll feel about the music teacher or the band teacher. You may tell me in a year from now you don't like them and you wish it was back the way that it was. You might tell me that you like them more and that you are happy that we now have them working with us in Southold. I'm in a very similar position as you. I do think the half-time band teacher and the, and a, and then a band teacher from fourth through 12th grade will provide us with a good learning environment for you guys, but it is certainly something, Scarlett, that we will look at and evaluate to see how well it works with our kids and with our teachers.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Scarlett. Somebody else started to get up back there, I'm sorry.
Good evening. My name is Erin Argo. I'm a Southold Tech's peer, and I watched the video. I've watched it several times, actually, and I have a few questions based on the video, just so that I can understand what's going on when we pass the budgets that we pass as voters and we elect people to sit on this board. First of all, I think one of the, sort of, what appeared to be a staged conversation that took place during that meeting involved the salary of the new teacher who's been hired, and I'd like to understand if I could first, because I did some research and tried to find out what that salary was, and I haven't been able to do so. I've looked online, I've looked at the previous minutes to try and know what that is, but I don't know what that number is, and I'd like for the board to speak to what this new orchestra teacher's salary will be.
Yeah, I don't remember, I don't have the salary steps memorized. I think the new, do you know what step it was for?
It was four.
Yeah, so the new orchestra teacher came in on step four.
Okay.
Which is, the new salary teacher was going on their eighth year of teaching. We agreed on starting him on step four in our school district.
And how do you make that determination?
You make that determination based on a number of things. You look at the value that a person adds to our district. So, for instance, three years ago, we lost our French teacher. French teachers are extremely hard to get. We have kids that want to take French. We always want to offer the same opportunities for them, so I paid the French teacher 18 steps to come here. She had had 24 years of teaching experience, so she gave up six of her steps to come to our district, but the value that she added to our kids is we still have a French program, whereas many other places have dropped their French program altogether. Now, if no one wanted to take French, I'd be fine with dropping our French program and not rehiring a French teacher, but when I have, you know, 49, 50 kids out of a couple hundred that have signed up to take French, we want to offer them that opportunity. So, the music teacher that we hired this year, when it came down to the two final candidates, one of them wanted 10 steps because they had 12 teaching years in another district, and, in my opinion, did not provide the value to our district that the new teacher did. Our new teacher has taught all three music disciplines and coached multiple sports, so they bring a value to our district that is different. And then, just like any other business transaction, you negotiate. They probably want the highest that they can get, and we want the lowest that we can bring them in at. And then there's also a fairness aspect of it. You know, like, you know, somebody who's put in a number of years in a certain place, like the French teacher that had 24 years of experience, you know, offering her step one is, would be unfair and kind of insulting to her. I also wouldn't have a French program any longer if I had done that. So, there's a lot of factors that come into place. You know, choosing the teacher, it's partially value-added is the approach that I take. You know, after we go through the hiring process, we start with teachers and administrators and interviews, then they progress through to where they get to, typically, I ask for anywhere from two to three final candidates that they would be comfortable with having teachers here, and then I meet for well over an hour with each one of them, and I talk with them about, you know, about their teaching experience, and I try to gauge what type of person they are, and I speak to them about their extracurriculars, because when I, you know, when they're interviewing, say, a music teacher, they're sitting there with music teachers and the administrators, and they're talking music and expertise, which is not my area. So, the music teachers figure out whether the person has the expertise to teach that lesson. I figure out whether that person will add value to Southold, both as a human being and also as a teacher. So, all of that gets factored in, and then we negotiate a fair number to bring a person in at. I think somebody who has eight years of experience coming in and being credited for is a very fair number. We've brought in, I myself, I can't speak for before me, I've brought in probably half a dozen teachers at a much higher level than that based on their experience.
Okay, so just if I could, just try and circle back through all of that and just get back to my initial question. What does step four encompass in terms of a salary?
It's step four, master's level on our salary scale. I don't have a salary scale in front of me.
And so, and I guess also to sum up that response, would that be that it's discretionary?
I think that contractually it's discretionary for 10 steps, you know? There's a number in there, but I, even my discretion, I don't get, I work for people too, you know, like, I don't get free rein. It's not, you know, you know, it's, it's not discretionary. It's based on experience. If you're coming out of college and you want 10 steps, it's not at my discretion to give you 10 steps, you know?
So, generally, one step per year?
Yeah.
Generally, I think generally...
I apologize. A step is a year of experience. I keep using the word step, and so, what I mean by that is a year of experience. I apologize, I should have been clearer. So, you know, how much experience we can credit a person, you know, is part of the negotiated process, just like buying a car or a house or anything else.
So, getting back to the previous meeting, I think there was also discussion about there being a part-time teacher that was going to be hired. What's the process looking like at this moment for that part-time teacher?
We already have, we just appointed a teacher that we're going to be splitting with Greenport, so we will now have a .5 band teacher, and they will have a .5 band teacher. It's the same person.
And what about that person's experience?
They actually have seven years in two different school districts. We kind of got lucky. You know, the island is shrinking, so there's a lot of other places that are, you know, losing positions. You know, her sixth, seventh, and eighth grade band position shrunk greatly, so they moved her to kindergarten, general music, and then she wanted a band spot, so she looked.
And so, this person has been hired at this point in time?
We just appointed her.
We had her earlier in the meeting.
Appointed her, okay. And then, my other question is, with respect to the reasoning for not hiring a band teacher, from what I learned from watching the video, was that declining enrollment was the reason given for that?
So, we've declined from...
It's okay, you don't need to summarize it. I heard it all. I watched it several times. I guess my question is actually, why was the decision made to hire someone for orchestra but not band? I guess if we've got the two, was there just an amazing surge of folks who wanted to do orchestra?
No. Our orchestra position is a K-12 position. We only have one of them. Our band position, we have a full-time band teacher and now a half-time band teacher. So, it wasn't, we, we, there's no way that we could provide our kids the orchestra opportunities that we offer now without one full person.
I guess I don't understand that. Can you try and explain that a little better? Because it feels like people have gotten up here and been pretty passionate about the fact that they don't feel like they're getting one whole band teacher.
So, I'm trying to understand, I'm trying to understand what you're asking. Like, why did we hire a full-time orchestra teacher and not a full-time band teacher?
That's exactly what I'm asking.
Okay. Because our orchestra, we have, we don't have an elementary orchestra teacher. We have one orchestra teacher for the entire school district. We had a band teacher for the elementary school, and our elementary school used to have 500 kids in it. It has just under 300 now. We had a band teacher for the high school. Our high school had about 550, 600 kids in it. We're around four now and will be closer to three. So, with the retirement, we did not need two band teachers to provide all the same programs that we have had in the past with 400 less kids, 40% less students, you know? So, that's why we hired, we do need a full-time orchestra teacher to provide all of the orchestra opportunities. So, we hired a full-time orchestra teacher, and we hired a, we're going to have a shared band teacher.
Okay. I guess it's...
Is that what you were asking?
I guess, no, I'm still a little perplexed by that. That's okay, it was sort of circuitous, but I think, I guess, the other concern I have is that a budget was passed that contains salaries of individuals who were quite higher than step four. Is that right?
Yes.
Yes. And there's, so then, there's quite a bit of excess in the budget at this point in time. Would that be fair to say?
There would be a difference between teachers' salaries, not as much as what the salary is, because we still pay the full benefits package for the retiree. So, but there would still be a certain amount in there, yes. Would I say a credit bit of excess? No, but there would definitely be a difference.
Would it be in excess of $20,000?
I'd have to look.
It's probably more in excess of $50,000, isn't that right?
Typically, a new teacher's package is about $85,000 when you add in salary, benefits, everything else. A normal new teacher, just, you know, Chuck, you correct me if I'm wrong, but typically around 85. A retiring teacher could be 150, but you have to still pay the benefits on that person because when they retire, we continue to pay their benefits until they hit a certain age, and then we pay their benefits minus Medicare or Medicaid, Medicare. You know, so, I would have to actually look at what the number is, but I would say it's probably more than 20, I would guess.
So, has there been some decision made about what's going to happen with all of that excess money that the school district is now saving after voters paid, you know, voted for this budget?
So, we'll probably, yeah, so we would probably do what we've done in past years with it. Like, in this year's budget, we put $750,000 of that excess money back into this year's budget, so when you voted on your budget this year, the first three-quarters of a million was from monies that we either had in reserves or excesses from last year. So, that would be part of an option. I have asked our new music chairperson to start looking at our instruments to see if we need to upgrade them, and I've talked to Mr. Shid about the possibility of transferring some of that money into those areas so that we can utilize that. You know, we've had a lot of repairs on instruments, but it seems to me that some of them are kind of old, so it'd be nice to be able to repair some of those. We tried doing that with a piano, but we had some, a difficult time getting a bid on that in the last couple of years. But, yeah, so, aside from that, though, we haven't really made any concrete decisions on it.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody else care to address the board? Nobody? Sure. Okay. That brings us to our board member commentary. I'm going to start with you, Mr. Gilvin. I think you want to share something, right?
I have nothing to comment on, but I do have, I was asked by Mr. Latham to read his commentary. I regret to, I regret that I am unable to provide this commentary in person, but like everyone in attendance this evening, my family comes first, and I'm away with my daughter as she prepares to begin her freshman year at Roger Williams. If you moved here specifically for the Southold School District in the last 14 years, John Crean had a hand in making the district attractive to you. A moment of vulgar frustration does not erase 14 years of honest public service. The insult was directed at Mr. Homer, Mr. Homer alone. John apologized, and only, and the only one who can accept his apology is Mr. Homer and perhaps the people in the room who heard the coarse language. People who were not present at the July meeting but are demanding John resign or be drummed off the school board for a personal insult he directed at a single person and for which he apologized are engaging in cancel culture, a noxious culture that, until now, was not part of the fabric of Southold. John has probably said Southold is a special place 100 times over the years, and I know he believes it, as we all do. One of the many things that makes Southold special is we forgive one another. We forgive one another because it's the right thing to do, and we're too small a community not to.
Do you have anything?
No.
Mr. Grad?
I just want to wish all the kids and the parents good luck with the start of school in September, and just comment on the school grounds, how nice they look, and all the hallways, the floors look immaculate, and the new asphalt paving by the middle, by the elementary school and the parking lots. It's quite a nice job that's been done.
Thank you. Dr. Crean?
Well, I'd like to echo Mr. Grad and, you know, Bill Metz and Anthony Grigon. I mean, we have, this is a 26-acre campus, you know? Maybe one of the reasons why we spend so much, but the place is nicer than a lot of college campuses, at least places I've been in the past. So, a lot of hard work done over the summer. The place looks great, and I want to thank, you know, all those folks who worked all summer for doing what they do for everybody in the community.
Thank you.
Bless you.
I don't want to keep everybody here because everybody's probably ready to leave, but I do have a few things I'd like to say.
I also want to comment on the staff that worked so hard over the summer that gets the buildings ready. For the students and the staff, when they come back, it looks really good. I see the sports teams are back this week, and that's always exciting to see. I see the sports teams are back this week and that's always exciting to see the activity outside. I've got a lot of thoughts here and I, I don't want to make this personal. However, no, I don't have children in this school district, the community member that asked. I had a parent that attended the school district, I attended the school district, my children attended the school district. I'm very, very proud of this school district. I always have been. I'm not always proud of our moments and things that occur, but I'm real proud of our district. I don't think not having students still in the school doesn't mean I don't have skin in the game. Again, I'm speaking for myself, I'm not speaking for the school board. I attend concerts, I attend productions, I attend sporting events, I attend open houses, I come to policy committee meetings. I'm no different than any other board member that's sitting up here. We all attend those things. So that part I took a little personal and I have some pretty tough skin. If you want to know anything about me, please ask me, reach out to me. We've asked people to come to our meetings and communicate with us for the last several years that I've been on this board. We actually like it. You're right, Tom, we could do a better job at it. I think we can all do better jobs at everything that we do. But we've asked, we've asked. Generally, there's nobody in the audience unless we threaten to cut sports and then we fill an auditorium. I love the passion that everybody brings. We all said this last meeting, after the meeting, nobody's looking to decimate the music program. We all love the music program. All of our children participated in the music program. But that's how we get to more than $30,000 of students. So you kind of picked a good night to come here with that, Tom, because I wonder about that as well. We're trying to do more and equal with less because there are a lot of people in our community that hurt, that can't pay their taxes. They still come out and vote yes on our budget, though, because we've looked at the roles and our community members are voting on our budget, not only the parents, and they pass overwhelmingly. So we owe it to our community to be fiscally responsible and still offer our students a quality education, all of the extras. Month after month, we say, we're like a private school because we offer the things that we offer, including the music and the robotics. At the beginning of the summer, before the music even began, I think it was before the retirement even, I think I reached out to Dr. Moore and asked him, whatever happened to our music summer program that we had? Because we used to have summer lessons over the, music lessons over the summer. Nobody else brought that up. I thought, whatever happened to it? Somebody's going to look into it. How did it happen? Was it through the school? Was it through music boosters to, again, encourage our music program? So those are the little things that sometimes happen. When we met last month, we talked about the perfect storm that's coming with the state budget. State budget is, we all, and I'm not even going to get into the politics of the state budget, but we're going to get less aid. We're going to get less and less and less aid. There's going to be an increase in the TRS, which is the teacher's retirement. And we have a decrease in enrollments. When you put all of that together, we're really trying to do our best with what we have without it being a burden. I don't think anybody here or anybody on the board wants to see a budget go down. That's one of my biggest fears every May. Is this the year? Is this the year? So we just try and do, do more. Regarding Dr. Crean, he's been here for 15 years. He's been a great school board member. He's, as Mr. Latham said, he's pointed out what a special place is Southold every meeting. We've almost started rolling our eyes at him because what a special place Southold is. We've all made mistakes and forgiveness is hard and I think forgiveness of yourself is even harder. And I know that Dr. Crean has been struggling with that this past month. Again, I'm proud of our district, I'm proud of our board members. People say it's a thankless job. We're not here to be thanked. We're not here, we don't get paid, we're not here for atta boys or atta girls. We're here because we care about the kids and we care about our community. I welcome you, please come to the board meetings, please speak to us. But if you don't get what you want today, it doesn't mean it won't happen tomorrow or next week or next month or perhaps next year. I believe in Dr. Moore, I believe in his recommendations, I believe he will keep an eye on this. And, and we will do, we will do our best and nobody's out to get anybody. And I, that's all I ask is that we start the school year on a positive note, that we say it's going to be the best school year we've ever had. It may be a little bit different.